Spin motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. First thing on the agenda, canvas Carroll County February seventh, twenty twenty-three special election.
All right, I'm just passing these out, we want to read the precinct name and then the votes, so.
They split me. Take four.
There are a few things on the back that are. What's that?
One more.
Yeah. Thank you. Oops.
I can start off, I have Carol Ward four, Cindy Scaterico forty-nine, Tim Tracy twenty-five. Eden Township, Cindy Scaterico, thirty-one, Tim Tracy six. E Walt Township, Cindy Scaterico forty-four, Tim Tracy nineteen. I have Arcadia. Cindy Scaterico thirty-eight, Tim Tracy twenty-one. Results from Carol Ward one. Cindy Scaterico seventy-five, Tim Tracy seventy-eight. Carol Ward two, Cindy Scaterico seventy, Tim Tracy eighty-two. And Carol Ward three, Cindy Scaterico sixty, and Tim Tracy forty-eight.
Yeah, I have Glidden Richard results, Cindy Scaterico forty-five, Tim Tracy twenty-five. Pleasant Valley Newton, Cynthia Scaterico forty-nine, Tim Tracy fourteen. Sheridan Grant Jasper, Cindy Scaterico thirty-nine, Tim Tracy twenty-two. Oh, Union, gotta get that printed. Union is Cynthia Scaterico thirty-six, Tim Tracy twenty-two. Washington Roselle Cindy Scaterico twenty-six, Tim Tracy eleven. Wheatland Nice Cindy Scaterico thirty-nine, Tim Tracy nineteen.
Final results. The numbers. We don't, we just, okay.
Yeah, they're on the abstract of votes, so Cynthia Scaterico six hundred and one, Tim Tracy three hundred and ninety-six.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the canvas of the Carroll County February seventh, twenty twenty-three special election. So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Please introduce yourself.
My name is.
Okay.
Um, I, I guess, since some. There has been an error, um, also it was the whole one. Um, you know that it goes to the Secretary of State. Um, that's been notified and has a very new clarification.
Commissioner of Elections.
Um, yes, the Secretary of State wasn't notified the next day after the election and instructed me to contact his attorney, which I did.
So the question is, were there any ballots timely, lawfully challenged?
That were not. Do you want to, is this?
Sure, introduce yourself, please.
Sure, I'm CJ Niles, and, and I'm speaking the same thing, that became, one of the candidates was a poll watcher in words one and Union Township. And had it not been for the Crown Records Enterprise with reporting, maybe you wouldn't have known, but this has nothing to do with candidates personally. It has to do with, um, it violates the election law because a candidate cannot be a poll watcher and be at those polls. So my question is, the Secretary of State's office, uh, Gordon just passed it off to the, I mean, they didn't.
I don't think they passed it off, they said proper procedure was for me to contact.
Okay, that was so. John.
Yes, yeah, and let him know exactly what happened and.
What's, okay, so I'd say what, what is, what, what happened there? And, you know, I think, yeah, to have it open and in the public is important and to have some consequences. Because it's, it is a violation, and again, it has nothing to do with people personally, it's the procedure that should be done. You know, or also, what's, what's the next step, or what are we going to do? And I don't know if that question goes to you, Courtney, or goes to John, or.
Well, the county attorney, you sure, do you want me to speak for you, John, or would you like to speak? Go ahead. Introduce yourself, please.
I'm John, I'm the Carroll County Attorney. Even if every vote in those precincts was thrown out, the winner is the same. So I see no bearing on the result with you. I'm not at liberty to discuss the entire statutory work product in my office. The matter was fully investigated. There is no willful violation on part of the commissioner of elections. I have decided that I will not prosecute the commissioner of elections, and as far as lack of attorney, there is my case.
For the comments?
Yeah, my, my question, John, would be, so is, is there anything? Uh, I don't want to hang anybody by their, you know, fingernails or toes or anything else, but it. This does need to be out in the public, you know, if you want fair and transparent elections and you want everything to be out there. And so is there anything said to the candidate who really, you know, was in the wrong? And, and my understanding is that even if you don't know, you know, there needs to be this sort of procedure. So are you doing anything, you know, you're not going to prosecute, um, Courtney, and I don't think anybody should be prosecuted perhaps. But I think the county supervisors need to address this and need to, um, look at it for future elections, you know. In years of the laws, no excuse, so is there anything that you address Cindy, or is she going to be addressing this?
I see no violation on her part.
A candidate cannot be a poll watcher, John.
The violation of, this falls on a major election.
I, I don't know how it can not be a violation when it's that it's, it violates election law. For, for a candidate to do that, and I've been a poll watcher before, I've never been a candidate and been a poll watcher, but I've been a poll watcher. And there are documents that you fill out and, you know, take to the, uh, precinct. And those people know who you are and what you're doing and, and have all the paperwork, and I, you know, that wasn't done this time. Because the precinct people did not know who, uh, who the candidate was and actually was. So.
I don't think precinct people violate their law, even.
Well. I guess, I guess.
Election misconduct, control, election officials. Notified citizens.
Well, and, you know, I said, I'm not.
Anybody else comments?
Please answer. Um, I just have an overview of who can be poll watchers, and correct, this is incorrect. Um, a poll watcher is a person. Who has official permission by the polling place. To be a polling place on election day or in a room where absentee ballots are counted before the poll closes. The following persons cannot be poll watchers, a candidate or an official on the ballot. Is that incorrect information?
I don't know whether you're reading that. That's a question.
It says the following persons cannot be poll watchers, a candidate or an office on the ballot. They cannot be a poll watcher. She was on the ballot. And was a poll watcher.
Again, I think the commission of elections. Did not. Perform a lawful violation, I think it's not having a technical violation. It was corrected a very short time later, and it had no result, no effect whatsoever.
Is that one of the requirements that it has to have?
Please stand up and introduce yourself.
Is that a requirement that has to have some effect on the result?
Those conversations are already gone beyond what I anticipated. I will not address legal advice members of the public. I'm here to advise the board, I'm here to advise the commission of elections. And given them my opinion, that is why.
There's a motion, is there a second? Promotion, second, any discussion?
Well, one thing I got to say, this is too bad that this happened, and it should have never happened. And I think it should not ever happen again. Uh, I think. The first time I ran for a candidate, I made myself knowledgeable in regard to what. You know, was required as an election, and I think. We need to be more cognizant of what the rules and regulations are. But this should not happen, especially when we're spending ten thousand dollars for a special election. But it should, it should never happen. And, uh. For what John's agreement. I think we have to move forward, or what John's comments to, to direct to the board and supervisor.
Motion, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll check yours.
Please answer, yeah. As Carroll County, Iowa, tax, tax pain citizen, I'm very disappointed to see what is happening in the past few years. Um, to and in Carroll County, for a Republican chairperson to claim ignorance on election information and be a previous senator. His words many years are very focused. It is time for this to end and an example we made.
Thank you. Number two, region twelve fiscal year twenty-four. Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah. Yes, yeah. Those of office, please, Eric, a magistrate new.
By flag, no photos today. I can take some. Yep, that's we're good. Okay. Okay, you're ready. I'm going to raise your hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
Is that good?
Okay.
All right, so raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of in Carroll County.
Of the office of Carroll County.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Starting you, soon as you found out about it, you, you started north by, right?
I didn't know.
Yeah.
Somebody, that was me. Thanks, thanks. Number two on the agenda, region twelve fiscal year twenty-four funding request. Please introduce yourself and proceed.
I am Rick Hunsaker, Executive Director at Region Twelve. And I just have our budget request, and not handy. But. Getting. See, you have one on actual letterhead, which.
Mine's the real one, it's even, oh, that's good.
That's good, so this is our FY twenty-four request, I know we have, uh, two of you that have not heard from me before. So if you have any questions, um, let me know, also here with me is Chris Whitaker, he's our local assistance director. Uh, which is over pretty much everything, uh, that is transit in our agency. So this is really broken down into four pieces, each of the first four paragraphs. The first are the twenty-eighty agreement dues, so Carroll County is part of a twenty-eighty agreement. With five other counties that formed Region Twelve, uh, fifty years ago. And, uh, the board, our executive board, on which Stephanie now that's rich was on it before, is the one that sets what the dues are. So they increase one cent per, um, per capita each year. It's readjusted after the census, if we lose or gain population, so that the amount only continues to increase whatever. Given Carroll County's population, uh, you did have a bigger increase, I believe that was this current fiscal year. So next fiscal year, at your population, ninety-four cents per capita is nineteen thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and forty cents. The second piece of the request is the public transit system, so that is also something owned and operated jointly by the six counties through the CAG. Uh, our request there again is one penny per capita more, which would be fifty-seven cents per capita. That's eleven thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. That is a, uh, that isn't guarded by twenty-eighty agreement, that is just our request for assistance to be able to operate the public transit system. The third piece here, which is related to transit, so it's really part of the second, is, uh, a per mile. It'd be six cents per mile to help pay for capital. And we can get, uh, anywhere from eighty to, is it eighty-five percent? For transit vehicles, uh, depending on if they are ADA accessible or not, from, from the federal government. So we use your funds to be able to help match and, uh, purchase new vehicles when we are eligible. Those new vehicles, uh, are, there's a management system set up in the state that is by miles and years old over their federal design standard. And so we get on that list, an example would be a minivan, which is four years or a hundred thousand miles to replace. We typically run them ten years and two hundred fifty or three hundred fifty thousand miles before we're eligible to replace them. Uh, and of course, now, even when we're eligible to replace them and we order them, we still have to wait a long time, uh, for them to come. Our estimated cost here, I don't have a specific amount, because that depends on the number of miles, is about a thousand dollars. What we do not count are miles that are not general county service. So we have contracts with New Hope Village, we do Medicaid transportation, we do a lot of transportation for schools. Or for nursing homes at the hospital, uh, if it's a contract with one of those agencies, those miles don't get counted. And what we would request from the county are, that's built into the fee that we have for those. Piece number three is the local housing trust. Uh, the CAG, and operates two, well, three nonprofits, one of which is Council of Governments Housing. That is the designated housing trust fund for our six counties. That is funded, uh, the, the bulk of that funding comes from the state of Iowa through the State Housing Trust Fund. We are required to provide a match, which will be up to twenty-five percent once it fully kicks in. And that's either in twenty-four or twenty-five, uh, the state did increase funding for that. In the past, we had asked for five thousand dollars, we're now asking for ten from each county, we do have some cities that contribute. Uh, that we ask, if we see some action in those cities, we'll make a request for a small, uh, amount to match. We also have several of the financial institutions in our region and provide, uh, some match for that. The fourth piece is something which the board had previously agreed to provide, uh, and you did provide twenty-five thousand this fiscal year. For potentially expanding our business revolving loan fund. We manage that through the Region Twelve Development Corporation. Um, I am, I am hopeful that we'll be able to seek up to, I think, one point two million would be our maximum. Uh, that we could apply for with three hundred thousand from the county, so that's fifty from each of the six counties. They've all agreed to provide it, and I believe we have all of the match in for this fiscal year, this would be for the second half. Uh, in the next fiscal year, if we are unsuccessful at, uh, acquiring those grant funds, then we would return those funds back to the counties. But I'm hopeful that we will get it. So our total request for FY twenty-four, sixty-six thousand three forty-seven sixty, plus six cents per mile for the capital match, which we think will be about a hundred thousand dollars. So, do you have any questions about any piece of that, development corporation, council of governments housing, or any of the things that we do? You know, the dues, uh, we use to match transportation planning, we use to match our economic development planning. Uh, there's a lot of little things that we do, uh, out on that board, and of course, uh, Scott's gotten a little taste of that being on the policy council. Uh, but do a lot of assistance with small communities, grant writing for free, we do grant administration, we help with comprehensive plans, nuisance abatement. Buy some planning and zoning, uh, rental inspections and houses and a variety of other things.
Awesome, valuable, like the TIF, once and learn. That was very valuable.
That's a series.
Thanks to our local assistance director, Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, yeah.
And coming up, several, they're like building one in Dawson, that was nice.
Yes, and coming up is, at some point is public records.
Open meetings, open, open records, best practices for public meetings and alternations favor too.
News and debate.
Yes.
Yes, hardest thing is to do them.
Yes, nuisance abatement, we talk. And, uh, open meetings, open records, you know, there's a lot of opportunities, I think, for especially our smaller cities. Where you have very small councils that aren't used to it, that can, um, easily make some unintended mistakes. So we try to get the information out there to help them comply.
You're talking about transportation, are you, and you're still having issues getting your buses and stuff to dance?
Yeah, the most recent order, uh, we had, they told us it would be eighteen months. Well, I remember, we used to program those buses for seventy-six thousand dollars. Uh, recently, it went from like a hundred, yeah, they're like a hundred and twelve, then went to about a hundred and fifty. And I, and I think our bid, I think we're paying like a hundred eighty for these three that we just ordered, because it's. And those are the big.
Those special ones that, those odd shaped ones?
Those are, well, the odd shaped ones, those empty ones, they don't make anymore.
Okay, they quit them.
Yeah, the ones that look like a mini van.
You guys like. They were very good, weren't they?
We like them, they're purpose-built vehicles, um, they wear very well, they're built in an auto facility where our buses are built like a camper. And so if you go to one of those factories, it looks like a little bit of a mess putting it together, but those are. The cutaway is essentially a light duty vehicle, those are the ones that, that are coming back pretty expensive. But we do try to buy minivans when we can, we don't get federal assistance for any of the non-ADA minivans. Unless we program it through our regional transportation dollars. Because we don't go only do federal funds for ADA accessible. And we've done a lot of ADA, those are the empty ones, uh, now we're back to purchasing remanufactured minivans. They, they aren't as great, I don't think they're as durable over time, but it's what we can get.
Any more questions? Thank you for coming and presenting, both of you.
Thanks, I'm just racing.
You're the driver, your local assistance director, I wrote your title down. I have no more questions, no decision will be made today, but. Yep. Courtney will notify, yes.
Did I comment it before?
Yes.
And CJ Niles, and I worked in Region Twelve for many years, in my working career, and, and they do an excellent job. And one of the best councils of governments in the state, and so they work for the whole county. And, and this board has always supported them and encouraged you to do that again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're very much aware of that, and I think they, they're so well, so good that. They've got some people outside the region trying to get their, use their resources now, am I right?
Every now and then. You want to turn into seven counties or eight counties, perhaps?
That is, that is not up to me, that's up to the boards, so.
And I think Mike, it's also on policy council to address.
Yep.
Yeah, so look at the taste in April. But she mostly, I think, had to listen to press about it again, so. That might change.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, that was the other thing, the. The workforce, or.
Yes.
Workforce.
The workforce resolution. Is that where you're going?
Yes, yes, no, consider, consider for approval, resolution twenty-three dash oh-six, withdrawal from workforce development. Chief elected official consortium.
I could give a class on this, but, um, I'll try to be as brief as I can. And there's a federal program called the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, WYOA. It's been around for forty years, didn't have that name, before that it was WIA, before that it was JTPA, before that it was SEA. Uh, Region Twelve, since eighty-three, we were the JTPA grantee, and it used to be, uh, there was always a twenty-eighty for the counties to share the responsibility. Like any federal brand, you accept the grant jointly, you accept that it's going to be carried out, uh, according to federal regulations. And you guarantee that if there's any money that has to be paid back, that ultimately the counties can pay it back. That's, I think, been there since the early seventies, I know it's been there since the early eighties. The counties, you have one person that sits on the board, it was Ruggles. Think it's Stephanie now, um, and. That board called the CEO, there's one from each county, appoints a private board. A couple of years ago, because funding has been decreasing over time, as a region, as a six-county region, we used to give about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, the state had a review from DOL, and because there wasn't enough money really to manage the system, DOL wanted the state to. To have a separate fiscal agent, a separate board staff, and a separate service provider. And the service provider is, is the one, these funds can be used for job training. So they employ people to enroll eligible clients, an adult, which is low income, unemployed adult, dislocated worker, which is people that were fired or suffered a grant. Or, uh, appliance closing and youth, who's your income eligible, uh, I believe sixteen to twenty-four. And so those, uh, those specific funds have specific federal regulations and there would be a service provider. So we blew up everything, joined with Sioux City and Council Bluffs, and have an eighteen-county region. Region Twelve serves as a fiscal agent, Community Action Agency of Siouxland serves as the board staff, Goodwill out of Sioux City runs the program as a service provider. IWD came back last fall to counties and said, you know, that was all wrong. Um, you can really have the same board staff and the same, um. Fiscal agent under the same roof, in fact, the county, the county, a county has to take responsibility for the grant. And they pointed to the board, the chairperson of that eighteen-county board, which was Wayne Miller from Cherokee County. So Cherokee County, you have to be the grantee under these funds, you have to employ the person, you have to be the fiscal agent. Or you can employ the person and contract for fiscal agent. Or you can appoint somebody else to be the recipient of the grant. For example, they could appoint us, and then we would run everything. Uh, that did not set well, and this is because over history, IWD, there has been some revolving door with staff. And IWD has not always been terribly honest with the counties, the reason that the counties run the program. Is because NACO at the national level has fought to have counties run the program. And when you think of Cook County, Illinois, or, uh, some of the big metros, they get a lot of money from the way they split it out. Those areas that have higher unemployment and have had a higher unemployment for a long time, plus population, they get a ton of money. Rural areas with a low unemployment rate do not get a lot. Rural areas with a low unemployment rate do not get a lot. And so the rules get set up for those bigger areas. And so Naco has always wanted the counties to be involved. In order to receive the funds, you have to have this twenty eighty, which you have. But the counties that have been active in these meetings. And it was led by Wayne. He did not win reelection. It's now Craig Anderson from Plymouth County. He was the interim chair. And Craig has been on the local CEO board for seventeen years. He was on with wit. They were happy with the way the program was running. It was fine. But it's about a million dollars that we received from that. So there's two problems. I W D not really telling, being honest with the counties two years ago, because they knew. This setup had to change, but they made us go through all this work and all this training for two years only to say. Yeah, we did it wrong. And they had a consultant that helped them. And consultant said, yeah, we knew that that was wrong, but we, we didn't know that you could all handle it if we actually did it the right way. Which is what they said, but pretty much what they told the counties, which immediately made some supervisors very unhappy. So those that have been involved with it want to wash their hands of it. We don't have to take this money. I W D originally said, will you still take the responsibility even if you don't have a twenty eighty agreement? Which of course was another false statement, because if you don't sign the twenty eighty, you don't take any responsibility if you don't sign the grant documents. They also tried to infer that if you don't take the money. And that area has to be served. D O L is going to make sure it's served either the state or I was going to have to do it. Or they'll find somebody else to do it if the twenty eighty doesn't exist. And D O L kind of inferred, you know, they could play favorites. So if the money goes to Polk County, they could really not make too much of an effort out of the region. That of course would be a violation of federal law, so I can't believe that D O L would have said that because they need to serve the whole region. So the counties had a meeting, the twenty eighty had a meeting, it's probably been three or four weeks ago now. Because they have to make a decision. Do I W D wants to know by the end of the month. Who's in the twenty eighty so that they can write a contract? If only one county stays. They will get the contract true for the million dollars, but they'll have to hire a board staff person. And they'll have to hire a fiscal agent or they'll have to do it in-house, which means the board supervisors would have to tell their auditor, you're going to have to run this program. Most auditor and, and as the supervisors pointed out, we really can't tell the auditor what to do. They're a separate elected position. And we don't know what the amount of work is. I can tell you our contract right now is for thirty five thousand dollars to the fiscal agent. Not enough. We do it because it's of service to some of our counties. But we are proposing an amendment to increase that. I think if you pay the fiscal agent fifty grand. If you hired a person, I don't know how you could find somebody to run the board staff and have the experience with program for less than seventy grand. You add benefits on top of that, I think you're probably a. A hundred and sixty to two hundred thousand dollar budget for admin. This program has a hundred thousand dollars. You can squeeze some out of the program side, but there's just not enough money. So between there not being enough money to operate the program and that I W D wasn't necessarily honest with the counties. You're finding, there are, I think there's nine or ten counties that out of the eighteen that have passed this resolution and have said, you know what? We're done.
So there are another five already pass it. Are we the last?
Autobin, Duck, Green Dead, it's on the agenda this week for Crawford and Sack. But I think they will probably both. Only county, I haven't heard anything from a page. Everybody else, I either have the resolution or it's on the agenda this week.
So you think they're all gonna pass it?
I think they're all gonna ditch it. I don't know if it's Kyle from the Sioux County. You probably know him.
Kyle Stricker.
Stricker is also. Kind of on board with, we need to be done. So I think you may find other regions. We'll take this out. When they heard that counties in our region were backing out, I think you have counties in other regions that also are thinking that they.
How much you say there's in that region?
There's like nine hundred thirty thousand dollars, maybe.
So it's just not enough to even make it worthwhile then?
There is not enough to run it, although as I told, I went to talk.
If, if we, if we pull out, it's my questions. Do we have any opportunity for these services from that?
Okay, so this is, I W D would say you're losing local control because right now you control it. The twenty eighty controls what happens with the region. Well, that's not really true. Because as you recall, the workforce center moved from Carroll to Dennison. They asked, they did not come to the CEO board and ask for an opinion. They did not come to the local board that the CEOs appoint and ask for an opinion. I W D just did that. And really, I think the spirit of the federal law is that the twenty eighty. Would hold the leases for all the workforce centers. You also can't tell any of the partners what to do. In, in a perfect world. Where vocational rehabilitation would throw in ten thousand and Department for the Blind would throw in ten thousand. And Job Corps would throw in five thousand and Proteus would throw in three thousand. And all of the partners that are supposed to support the workforce center would put money into an administrative pool to run the system. But everything is siloed. Vocational rehabilitation answers to their boss and Proteus is a different, they're a nonprofit for migrant workers. They answer their boss. Job Corps has their money. The community colleges have their money. The Department of Education has their money. And they're all pieces within this broader W I O A legislation. But the only thing that counties have control over is the W I O A Title One money for adult dislocated worker and youth. And it's true, you can appoint the board. It's true, you can decide what you want to spend the money on, meaning do we want to train truck drivers or not? Do we want to train nurses or not? But there are eighty nine people in this eighteen counties that are currently enrolled. And to be enrolled could be anything from, we are going to write your resume. And we are going to do some interviews and you get a job and boom, you're gone. It's the, the lowest amount of money that we have to invest in somebody to get them gainfully employed. Others, there's a lot of retraining, particularly with dislocated workers, so they might be going through a computer class. Or if they want to go take C D L, that's seventy five hundred dollars to take the C D L certification, at least in the Council Bluffs area. That's what it's been costing. Plus, there's the support fund. So while somebody goes to school, you can pay their mileage. You can help with childcare. If they need steel-toed shoes that they can't afford, you can buy them steel-toed shoes. The plan that the board approves talks about how you will approve different training. And the limits that people can receive under the program for things like mileage or clothing or childcare. And, and those truly are all, you can decide what you want to do, but you don't have a ton of money. And those jobs that you decide if you want to do or not, they have to be high demand jobs. So even if you want to pay for taxidermy. That would probably be a finding from the state or the feds because. How many taxidermy jobs are out there? They want to be in high demand careers, so it's nursing, it's trucking, it's manufacturing. So there's.
Sounds like your recommendation is to withdraw.
It says in here, the CEO board voted eleven oh at this meeting dissolved. So there was nobody that even. I haven't heard any of the counties. There's been some interest in, wait a minute, if we stayed, everybody else ran out, we'd get that million dollars. You would get the pot, but you'd have to run the program. And you'd have to serve people and two other, you know, the two other workforce centers. I think Crawford is, has a bit of trepidation because they are concerned about what happens in Dennis and if somebody else makes some decisions. But they, they don't have any control over that anyway.
Where's the workforce center at?
It's, you know where the Aldi is, where the Donalds is. And is it Jensen's or where's, where's, you said there's, you'd have to serve two.
What, yeah, what?
Council Bluffs is in their mall downtown. Yes, you said it, it's close to their bus barn.
It isn't part of this too, then if you, you pick these officers and you wind up as a county of record. If you assume all the responsibilities far as unemployment and all that, I think that's a gap to be a big issue.
Yes, I think if what would happen, like if you were the only ones that stayed in and you got the money, you'd probably try to convince somebody to run the program. And as I told the other counties, if one of you wants to stay in. And you came and said, we want Region Twelve to be the grantee and run the program. We would do it, assuming that the board, all six counties that are on the board would be fine for us to run it. We have the experience of doing it. I don't have anybody on staff now that's actually run the program. I guess except for me, Chris looks capable and Chris, who, I'm sure he would love it. But Mark, our fiscal officer is very adept at it because we're doing, we're doing the fiscal agent now. And there is, there, I would think there's a possibility, depending on how the state does, that they may ask us to be fiscal agent. Because they like the job that we're doing. I don't know if that's true. I think that's a possibility, but that would be a totally separate contract.
So if, if everybody just withdraws.
Yes.
What's the state gonna do? The money gonna go somewhere else?
Don't know. Well. It could. Or they could determine, because you could have the Des Moines area. Let's say there are eight counties, say, sure, we'll take on these eighteen. They're going to be taking liability for the eighteen. So even if they screwed it up, which they've done twice before, as you remember, C Tech. And prior to that is the cog that died in nineteen eighty two. Because they misspent money, you wouldn't be responsible for it because you're not part of the twenty eighty. They would have to show that services were available. The two people in the region, and I think they'd have to do that through enrollment. And through having a presence in each one of the centers. There are currently, I think, four people in Carroll that are enrolled. I have no idea if they're in training or if. They're post-program because that eighty nine enrollments. Includes people that are in the system who've already been served, but you're doing follow-up with them to monitor their progress and do reporting.
Great. Amazing you bring up those two stories. And I think you, you and I are the only ones who are on it, except maybe CJ. I hope no one will remember them all.
Gee, I can still remember. Chris was there too, because we were in that audit with C Tech. They got money at the end of the fiscal year, like a big lot of money that they were then just writing big bonus checks to their employees and that's what went wrong. But, but we got money out of that same disbursement at the end of the year, where we got like two thousand dollars to cover one payroll, but we were still in the audit.
So you're not sure what will happen as far as the funding that we would be allocated for?
No, no.
It might go to another region and let them farm it out or state might do it.
I would think the state, the region has to be served. To what level of service it would receive, I don't know. And who would be doing that?
But you know, we're not talking about that's going to mow anything.
No, a million dollars is not a lot. You take, you take a hundred. Even if he took a hundred and fifty out, if he figured out how to spend, because there's a way to spend some of the program money, the non-admin money. For your board staff person or for your fiscal, you have to be very careful about what you do. But even if you got a hundred and fifty out. If you employ five people in the workforce center full-time to go work with clients, because a lot of times it's making referrals. And it's getting, it's working on life skills and doing classes and interviews. You know, five people is probably going to cost you. Seventy, one hundred thousand dollars a piece, depending on where they are. And you take that out of a million dollar budget and take your admin out of a million dollar budget, you're talking one hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars to send people to school in an eighteen county area. It's just the program, when I started at Region Twelve a bazillion years ago, nineteen ninety, we used to have a. A summer program where we employed three teachers to go out and work with kids. We'd hire high school kids to go work for governments, counties and cities and nonprofits. They'd mow grass. They'd help with records, popping and filing, whatever. And we would go out and monitor the kids' progress. And if they were, we'd test them. And if they had low math or literacy skills, then we'd have teachers that would work with them. We used to spend a million dollars just on a summer program, just in our six counties. But this program keeps getting cut and cut and cut every year.
And Richard Uggles was on that board.
Rich was on the board.
And so I, I know that Rich is watching us today, so he calls another problem, right?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Well, I, I'm glad you explained.
Yes, that was a very good explanation.
Yes.
It appears to me. The wisest thing is you look awesome.
It is unfortunate, you know, it's bittersweet because we've run this program for a long time. I understand it. I know that it can help people. But. Didn't like the fact that we were misled. You know, I asked them in meetings, so this consultant, you must have gotten a new one, because you must have fired the one that you had if they lied to you. Unless they didn't lie to you and you just lied to us. Oh, no, the consultant's been very helpful and they've been helpful here and there and it's been D O L all along. And, and a lot of the I W D staff are new, so they probably made some mistakes. Saying some things like, you still have the liability, even if you don't sign the twenty eighty. I think it's just because she didn't know it. Which. And. There's been a lot of revolving door there. They haven't always been great partners. There are some places where they can be great partners, but there's a lot of shifting sands that we've seen over the years with this program. I'm used to it, but they're not the best partners from state government.
With that. I will take a motion to, I will make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty three oh oh six. Withdraw from workforce development.
Chief elected.
I will second that motion. Any more discussion? On favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, it's resolution. Thank you. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
All right.
Thank you for the detailed explanation.
You guys have any questions?
You don't want to get old.
Yes.
I have a business card you can leave, please.
Did the right football team win last night for you?
They didn't line on the right.
Look how thick his wallet is.
You know how to get a hold of him.
And he does, there you go.
Did Anthony catch you yet to get all your information?
No, not yet.
Okay. But you can email it to me too, if you want, so we know how to get ahold of you.
Play a full eight hours, Mike, when you go out.
Full eight hours.
Look this thick. And he goes through every sentence, every word on every page.
That is kind of true.
I did it during COVID with a mask on and twenty five feet away from him. I understood about that much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, approved payables. In the amount of five hundred and twenty four thousand three hundred and twenty seven dollars fifty seven cents. Any questions for comment or discussion?
We've got some people must be using a lot of medication for the next door. And I did ask, sure, during pre-budget. If he's making use of the, for the ones that don't know this, but we belong to Naco. And the ma- major reason we joined Naco was there is a drug card. That for people that do not have any drug insurance. They get a twenty percent discount off their drugs, so we utilize them for over the jail. But he told me they are utilizing that, so. We hired somebody to hang the camera in public jail.
Yeah, that was grant money though.
Our IP been able to do it?
He recommended that Reeseburg do it.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, okay.
You probably saw the claim for conservation and the county's contribution to the stockroom. Taking care for this year.
Under, under board supervision, like the Manning Monitor and two rapid enterprises on the front page, what, what are those?
Yeah, we're required to publish our board minutes, so after you guys have three little minutes, we send these to the paper.
And notice of public hearing.
Yeah.
And the payables.
There's a lot of expense.
A lot of tiny print.
I see. And that just goes under our, our column. It's official business.
You'll see, I got you an eight Stanford.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve five hundred and twenty four thousand three hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty seven cents.
I'll second that.
An emotion, a second, any comments? Always in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. And I want to apologize for being in a way. Had a family member that's had an engram today and had joined the STEM club, so.
Item number five, approved treasurer semi-annual report.
Hello.
Hi Lisa.
Okay, so obviously twice a year we do this semi annual. It's a great set of balance. There are certain accounts that I make sure following the revenues and expenses, private work of things, so. There are also certain accounts that I make sure. What we're showing on our books, methods of work have done a right this way. I mean, I compare my totals, like the motor vehicle coming in, motor vehicle going out. The use tax for coming in, coming out with the. So I check my totals and then I get to Portman. She checks her totals that she follows. And then we make sure we dive and then we submit it to you guys. Be approved and then put in the paper. Any question?
I have. Anybody else question? Do we have a motion to approve the treasurer semi annual?
Motion to approve the. Iowa County Treasurer Semi Annual Reports.
There's a second now.
I will second that.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Lisa. Number six, first reading of. Ordinance, county amended county ordinance number twenty-seven. What this is is Ragby, five years ago. Did not overnight, but Carol, they threw county. So this is for. Mentors that need. I don't think the right one in front of me coordinator. Just thank you, yeah. Um, so what we did was take the twenty twenty, what Courtney did, I believe, was take the. Twenty eighteen. Ordinance. And. The county attorney added a day to it, means they're overnight in here, so it'll be the day they come into Carroll County on July twenty-fourth. And they leave on July twenty-fifth. Other than that, it's verbatim, other than the date changes.
Basically, the ordinance is a control and safety and well-being of the public. In regard to particularly uh, commercial sale of food and other merchandise.
So this incorporates. This would be for the unincorporated towns, so not in the city limits of Carroll, but the Mount Carmel, Maple River, and Roselle and. Along any county highways, the rural residents. Any discussion questions? So this is for, is this the official first reading?
Yeah, this will be the first reading, so you guys can um.
And schedule it for.
Basically, schedule a second reading.
So after you publish it, it'll need two weeks.
We publish it um, once it's been approved. So you guys would need to set the next hearing date, which could be next Monday, or a lot of times it has been. Depending on what type of ordinance it is, and if there's a lot of comment involved with it, it can be two weeks from now, so.
So I recommend the twenty-seventh. February. At nine thirty.
Yeah, you best.
Two weeks from today.
We said two twenty.
Two twenty-seven.
Two twenty-seven.
It'll be during our regular meeting.
I got a radio today, I just want to make sure.
So did you?
You have it that way.
Last day.
I think Jean has it today.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so do we need a motion to approve public hearing? And to accept the.
You can or you can make. A motion. Approving your first reading of the.
So does that all state the date of the second reading?
You can certainly state that.
So I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of county resolution, county ordinance number twenty-seven. Oh, oh, no, just twenty-seven. Um, first reading today and a public hearing will be two weeks from today, the twenty-seventh at nine thirty A M.
Technically, isn't a hearing.
I'm sorry, the first reading, reading, second reading and perhaps waive the third reading and approval at. February twenty-seven. There's a second.
I will second that.
A more discussion? All those in favor, say hi by saying hi.
Hi.
Those.
Now, also, I will say that after we, on the second reading, we can approve the second reading and waive the third. If we don't hear a lot of comments. Which is what we do a lot of times. Just explain that for new ones.
Number seven, manure management annual updates. Sterm finishers, section ten, Sack Township, Sack County. Jasper Finisher Farm, section fifteen, Jasper County.
Are those, were they for your updates?
I didn't, we'll see where I got that. Well, thank you both for your updates. That first time in chair, I'm learning. Number eight, committee reports.
Go first. Uh, so last week we had a. Pre-budget meeting with the treasures on Tuesday. Um, go back a day, on Monday I had a uh, pre-budget, pre-budget. Uh, meeting with the recorder. And also. Then Tuesday with the pre-budget meeting with the treasurer, um. And then I had a pre-budget meeting with uh, secondary roads. On Tuesday also. And tonight I have a conservation meeting, uh. Five thirty, that's it.
I agree. Last week, Tuesday, February seventh. Had G I S planning and zoning and passport free budgets. Following that was ambulance pre-budget. After that, I met. Mike, we had an informal meeting with Zach Anderson at the Secondary Roads. Wednesday, nine o'clock, Gene and I met with. Veterans Affairs for pre-budget. Um, Friday. Second. District Board meeting for judicial. Branch, there was talk about the state might turn us into with the governor's realignment into an advisory board. Friday also, Courtney and I met with. Environmental health. In the basement, trying to figure out the desk situation and put a timeframe on moving, they're wanting to get the ground floor. Well, actually, as part of that, the state public defender is relocated to home to get out for that. And the. Two mile court officer will be hopefully finding a new home down in environmental health. In the next couple of weeks, did you hear anything more on that, Courtney?
March. Six or seven, I think is when they're gonna be out over there.
So maybe by March fifteenth then, did you, have you spoke with Tisha about that?
No.
Okay.
She wasn't here, or at least I didn't see her.
Um, this week.
March, March, that's when they find during the day and dawn and then.
No, that's when Carrie Hart will be out of the brick building, so.
And that is officially then.
Rough, no.
But and I think, you know what, if it gets to a point where we need to push them, it's true, yeah. Because they're legal regardless.
Yeah, true, um, it sounds like it's a pretty firm date, though.
But their lease is done April one.
I believe it's the fifteenth, but I don't know why it's in a half of a month, but. Anyway.
Can't push.
Yeah.
Do I? No. Um, tomorrow morning, six thirty. Uh, A M is landfill executive or solid waste commission executive board meeting. Thursday. Cindy might be taking over the decaterization board, but that's at three o'clock on Thursday. And that's all I have, other than we meet next Tuesday instead of Monday, which we can announce that next week.
Also, we meet at eight o'clock with the architec, right? Yeah, on remodel update, so.
On next Tuesday.
Yeah, so before that, I'm probably over me, I'm on the architec.
I'm duckus, questions?
Okay, then I'll go next on Tuesday. I uh, was down at ISAC, the Iowa State Association of Counties. And um. Judge the final round uh, for the scholarships for ISAC scholarships. Uh, there's six districts that we give scholarships with. Two finals that we've interviewed. And uh. Gives you all love and life with kids today. Particularly the last one we interviewed. Man, that young lady come out that day at eighty miles an hour, never missed a beat. She hit it on all twelve cylinders and. You know, we had a second guess or think about a question. Um, then Wednesday, as he said, we had the vets pre-budget. Uh, this week I've got the radio newspaper. And Friday, I've uh, I have the June Law Attention Center Board meeting up at the S Center in Cherokee. On Friday. And I'm not sure if we have a rolling hills or not this week or not.
Cindy?
I guess I don't have a lot to report.
Thursday.
Other than Thursday, and um. Did you say that we're supposed to meet early before the next?
I I will send you guys both an email and I'll, yeah, I'll give her your name and content next Monday or.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
We have a. A meeting with the. Update with the architect and contractor.
For the court.
H V A C.
Courtney, next week, other than meeting on Tuesday, what is on the agenda?
Well, I will be here on Monday.
Okay, I'll stop and say hi.
Office is open. The special elections will happen in March, um. So I have. The board to do committee assignments.
Okay.
Is what I have on there right now, so.
Oh, yeah.
Is gonna go through and figure out who's gonna be on.
I'm doing the premature one because Stephanie's gone for on the um. Decaterization, I can give you the after meeting. Any comments online? Dalton, anything on there? I don't see anything.
Just kind of.
Absolutely, yes.
Sorry.
Please introduce yourself.
I don't, I'm C J Niles, and I don't want to wear out my welcome, but I've been thinking about what what do I really want with this with this discussion? And um, and. I think back to when I was a trainer for Parrot for towns. And um, what I think I really want is accountability. And and I look at that, you know, from from this board and what happened and no, was that the biggest infraction ever? No, but it was, you know, a violation. And I am talking as an individual, I represent no group or no, no party or or nothing and and this, you know, so my person. Personal reflection is that accountability, and I would like acknowledgement from this board and from Cindy, the candidate, and from. Courtney, the election officer, said there was a violation, and I would like an an apology or recognition of that and that it will, you know, not let it happen again, so. That that's my individual request and and you act as you want to act, but.
Well, I feel that um, by me reaching out to the Secretary of State and explaining exactly what happened. That was me being held accountable for making sure that our rules are followed and following what their recommendation was, as far as how John handled it after that, I have no control over that, but. Um, I could have just as easily not done anything. But I did the right thing, I reached out to them, explained what happened and did exactly what they told me to do, so. Um, that's how that process was handled.
So that's acknowledgement on your part here, which.
Yeah, I mean, it's very clear, but um. So I I feel that. I did what I needed to do, I guess. In that situation, so. And um. I did have permission. Um, I did everything that I knew to do. And as soon as I was made aware that there was an issue, we changed course. So um. I felt that I did everything that I could do.
Well, I encourage more education before another election, you know, by by all of us and by the boards and, you know, and by the public, and this time it was. You know, this situation, but we don't want it to be. Anymore, so. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Any other comments? I don't see any online, it says participants one, can we click that chat box and see?
I believe so.
No. The host. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Well. I know, I said I'll take one.
A motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Meeting adjourned.
Cindy, I'm glad to meet you, I didn't.
Thank you.
Didn't know you before.